9:00 AM, Monday, August 1st, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So, moving back to you.
Motion by Mr. Staney, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The first item on the agenda is SPOLOSS. We will be receiving an update on SPOLOSS capital and non-SPOLOSS capital projects. Our presenter is Ron Burke-Halter, Capital Projects Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. The first project update is the Richard Craig.
Our tennis court resurfacing. This project is now complete. It was completed last week. We resurfaced and repaired a total of six tennis courts for a cost of $122,000. We have an intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough where they're going to contribute 35% or $43,000 toward the cost of this project. The next project, this one's in progress. This is the baseball fields at the old soccer complex across the street. We're converting the three old soccer fields into four new baseball fields. The contract amount for the fencing portion of this project is a little bit over $96,000. Our next project is the Mosley Park park improvements. Recently, we received five RFPs on this project. Staff has reviewed and graded the RFPs that we received. The total park improvements for the Mosley, for this part of the Mosley, as you see in the upper left-hand corner, we're putting in additional parking. There will be two 20-foot by 40-foot pavilions, a new restroom facility, a playground with a walking track. There'll be stairs or steps that take you up to the recreation center, which is on the right-hand side. The playground itself will accommodate 32- to 5-year-olds, which is in the top of the playground facility there. And the larger playground, which is for the 5- and 12-year-olds, will accommodate up to 100 children. This project I'll be bringing before the board at the August 15th meeting for the award. Heritage Park, this park, this, as you can see, is in progress. It's a new 2,400-square-foot storage facility. Just looking at it from a different angle. Once this is complete, Park and Rec will be able to store everything within this building, and they'll be able to cease renting the 12 pods that they're renting currently. The concession stand at Warren Holder with the storage. This building is a total of 2,400 square feet. The budget on this facility is, for this building, is $189,000. I'd like to take a second to say that we took this job and we put it out to bid through the purchasing department. The low bid was $289,000. We made a conscious decision that we were going to do it in-house with SPOLOSS people. We were going to manage the project. We were going to take the bids, and Ronnie, Michael, Maury, and Lynn, in my opinion, hats off to those folks, they were able to build this exact same building for $100,000 less than the bids that we received. Fairview Recreation Center, this project has been completed since our last update. It's a picture of gym A in the elevated portion there. That's the walking track. This is upstairs. This is the workout area. And this is the community room inside the building. Locust Grove X Center, this job is still in progress. This is the converting of the old gymnasium just beside the church. If you can see in this picture here, the two windows that you see in the rear, those were exhaust fans. We removed those exhaust fans. We put in windows to get some lighting in. Again, that's the exercise equipment. That's our new elevator. It's a two-story elevator. Wanted to show this slide. Downstairs, obviously, we put the new flooring in. The doors on your extreme right and extreme left that you're looking at there, they were three-foot doors. They were for, they were ADA compliant because of the special needs down there with the wheelchairs. If everyone has seen the wheelchairs before, the sports wheelchairs that have the angled, they would not fit through these doors. If you were at an event down there in special needs, you had to get out of your sports wheelchair, get into your regular wheelchair to use the facilities. We renovated the stalls inside, and instead of three-foot doors, we put four-foot doors so there's easy access with the, with the sports wheelchairs now. This is the Locust Grove Event Senior Center. This one has been complete since the last update we gave. This is showing the dining hall, and in the back is where the serving line is in the kitchen that the renovations were done. This is downstairs. This is the billiard room. This was two separate rooms. We took the wall out in between and put the archway in between. And this is the downstairs lobby down by the fireplace. E-911, construction started on this approximately three weeks ago. As you can see, the grading's going on on the outside of the building, the storm drain's going in, and the renovation on the inside of the building, the demolition's been done on the inside of the building. This project is, again, it's a 22,500-square-foot building, and estimated completion is April Fire Station 9 on Rock Quarry Road. The total square footage of this building is 9,396 square feet. It's three apparatus bays, as you can see, the three bays there. And as you can see, as far as the progress, the roof trusses are being set, and the completion on this is November. And that's showing what the completed building will look like. Haven House, again, since our last update, this project has been complete. This is a 14,400-square-foot facility. This is the playground, the play area we fenced in. The playground itself is donated by the Henry County Rotary Club. This is the dining facility. On the right-hand side there is the kitchen. And again, this is the living area. Stockbridge Police Precinct, this project is now complete. The total square footage on this building is 17,800 square feet. This was done in conjunction with the City of Stockbridge. This is the renovated lobby. Roll-call room for patrol officers. It's a small conference room. And this is CID. Last job is not a, this is non-SPOLOSS. This is a transit lube shop. This total, this building is 3,850 square feet. It's three-bay. Total, the project is complete, except for some grading and an oil-water separator. Within the next two weeks, we'll be able to turn this over to Fleet.
Ron, that was, or I guess, Mr. County Manager, that was paid for with grant money? Is that correct, the lube shop?
That is correct. It was a $127,510 grant from the FDA. Any questions?
Any Board member? Mr. Alana?
I just hate to say this, but observation of all the items that you discussed, could you tell me how many of those were in District 2?
Zero.
Thank you.
Any other Board member have a question or comment?
Mr. Holton.
Mr. Holton?
Ron, as far as the event center, as far as the cost of renovation versus the cost of new, I think it's important for people to see just how much was saved. And I believe it's, to date, the purchase of the facility and the renovations is like 1.3 or 1.4 million.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So, that's a third, basically, of what the cost of the new facility would be, or the previous one that was just built. So, I just want to say, I'm so proud that we were able to utilize that facility and make it useful to the community at a price that's a third of what the cost of the new one would be.
Mr. Reddick?
Yeah, just a question in the, with it. On Mosley Park, do we have the storage building that we're going to put in down there between the two, between the four, excuse me, football fields?
Commissioner, we do not have in the, when I'm going to the board on the 15th, the storage building is not in there. What we're doing right now, we're getting a budget on that storage building, and once I get the budget, I'd like to sit down with you.
We can do that in-house. I mean, that's not a...
Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. Same as we did with the concession stand.
Okay, that's good.
I have a question. Ron, it's not on the issue, but the soccer complex up there in that corner, are we finished with it, and are they going to be able to use that apartment?
Yes, sir. It's complete. The fencing's complete. The soccer association, they contributed money toward the netting, which is behind the goals, okay? The higher netting. We put the 10-foot fence up. They needed it higher. It's, the fields have grown in. Yes, they're in use, and they will be for the soccer season, I believe, is...
Is it by the way?
Yeah, I believe that that is correct, yes.
Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing, and this may be a question for the County Manager. I thought we were looking at the possibility of lacrosse being on one of these fields across there. I know we got more than three fields. Has that been discussed, any?
We have talked to the new Lacrosse Association, representatives from the new Lacrosse Association, and we're going to try to work that in to where fields are not being used during lacrosse season, we're going to make fields available.
Good, because they were, they were playing, I went to a couple, I had a couple of grandkids playing in it, and I went to it. It was pretty sad what they were playing on, knowing that we had these other fields that were around that were available.
Madam Chair. Um, Ron, we were looking at the gym floors. I know they were working on the floors. Are they just, uh, complete?
They're complete.
And then also, we were looking at exchanging, exchanging some of the equipment. We had a number of lap machines, lap machines in the, in the workout area. We're looking at bringing in some bench press and those type of machines.
Commissioner, we're going, it will happen either the end of this week or the first part of next week. There's two machines that we're going to swap between, we're going to, we're going to pull them out of Mosley, bring them to Fairview, and swap those machines out, and that way it'll be evenly distributed where we don't, we're not overloaded with too much weight equipment at one facility where we have cardio and weight in both of them.
Thank you.
Mr. Reddick?
One final comment in with the picture of this on the screen. I think we all need to be mindful of the fact of what's just happened in Washington and the big debate that's been going on with extending our credit and the various issues that are, that are there. We need to be mindful of the fact that, we said, this one was done with grant money. And I know our agenda tomorrow is, has several items on it that are dealing with grant funds. Those grant funds, and with the cutbacks and the trillions of cutbacks over the years, we just are all going to have to be able to not see grants coming back from, from the feds or the state. And it's going to fall back on the local taxpayer if, in many of these projects. So, it just, it just caught my mind when this particular one was there, and tomorrow, like I said, we have several on the agenda that deal with, with grant funds. This has been nice, but as far as our future in banking on grants, I don't think we're going to be able to grant, to bank a lot on grants. So, just wanted to mention that.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we're going to receive an update on SPOLOSS transportation projects. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, Director of SPOLOSS Transportation Projects. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Board members. If I can take just one second to set up the screen. First of all, I would like to start talking about what, what we've been doing on resurfacing that's been completed by Henry County DOT using our SPOLOSS funds. First of all, District 1, you can see that there's been 11 roads being resurfaced. Five of them have been full-depth reclamation, or FDR. And I believe Terry has explained this before in a previous meeting. FDR is when the existing asphalt is reclaimed, crushed, mixed with asphalt, laid back in place, and then resurfaced, which will give a better life than what is out there now. Roughly close to six miles on, on roads resurfaced on District 1. District 2, 15 roads were resurfaced. Nine of them were used, were done with the FDR. Also, six miles were, were completed. District 3, six roads were resurfaced. Half of them were FDRs. Again, just a little, little bit over six miles, 6.5 miles. District 4, 17 roads were resurfaced. 11 of them were FDR. Six miles were resurfaced. District 5, there were too many roads. I had to put in two slides. There it is. 23 roads were resurfaced for 3.4 miles completed. Overall, we're looking at close to 30.9 miles or 31 miles resurfaced during the fiscal year of 2011 by Henry County DOT using our SPOLOSS funds. Next, I want to talk about roadway. We have completed the roadway acquisition on Stairway 155 at Fairview. This is a GDOT project where they're going to let it out, and it's a roundabout. So, that's coming up on the November letting for GDOT. Also, we're acquiring roadway for Hemp Hill 138. Projects in design that we have currently, Chemgrad Road Extension, Fairview Road, Amber Block Widening, Hemp Hill Road at 138, Old Highway 3 at Stairway 81, Mount Bethel at Stairway 81, Harris Drive, and New Hope Road. Projects that we completed so far this year, Hudson Bridge Road, which we just did ribbon cutting about a week and a half ago, East Atlanta Bridge, Pulling Road, Rocky Creek Road at Hampton-Locust Grove, which we just completed. Their intersection last week was turned on just before school started. Simpson Mill Road, East Atlanta Road at Panola Road, Lake Dull Road at Stairway 81, and of course, resurfacing, for a total of almost $14 million of construction and close to $20 million total project budgets. Currently, while we're having construction, we still have Eagles Landing ongoing. We're more than halfway through. Rock Quarry Road, Oakland Road, King Mill Road at Stairway 42, South Bethany Road from Cohen to Philadelphia, Mackey Road, and Stashworth Road, Flippin Road, Box Colby Repair, Stairway 81 at Race Track, Stairway 138 at Miller's Mill, and Stairway 42 at Harris Drive. Total construction currently just over $28 million. Total construction budget, or total project budget, $45 million point four. Now, I'm just going to show you what, since last time we were here, what we have accomplished. This is Eagles Landing, early or late December of last year. This is Eagles Landing now. The traffic had been shifted. That was done back just before Christmas of last year. Phase 1 completed. The bridge over the railroad track and the bridge over the Pace Creek, Phase 1 completed. You can see that right there where the crane is on Phase 2, and that's the bridge over the Pace Creek. This is before, just going up towards the railroad bridge, and this is now. Right now, all the beams are being, being installed on this bridge over the railroad track, and metal decking is also being installed. We're looking at starting point concrete for those decks probably around late September, first of October. This is how it looks now. We've been, contractor's been doing a lot of grading, placing a lot of GAB. That's another view of how it looks today. They're just going to start paving this week. The equipment was brought up this weekend. Hopefully, they'll start today if, if weather permits. It was kind of cloudy this morning. There's another view. Right now, the plan is to be paving everything that you see to the, to the left of the picture, and traffic shift. Once we do that, in this area by Country Club and also right here, this is his slate, we're going to be shifting traffic over there, too. Then we're going to be able, contractor's going to be able to work on the inside portion of the, of this project, so. This is Hudson Bridge. That's how it looked back early this year. This is Hudson Bridge now, just completely different from what it used to be. Four-lane divided highway going from Jodico towards I-75. That's before. That's today. One of the things that we did in this project, we, we added two signals, one at Jodico and one at Willis Drive, improved the movement of vehicles for the area. This is King Mill Road at Stairway 42. That's another view. That's Stairway 42. About this project, this is kind of particular, when we put it out for bid, the state had declined us to put a signal. So, we went ahead and moved forward, forward since it was part of the SPOLOSS to realign King Mill since it was in a bad location, realigned it with the existing King Mill just south there. After going back towards the GDOT, going back to GDOT, we requested again during construction to look at our permit. We resumated the permit. We finally got the approval from them, but this, just this past June. So, I'll be bringing tomorrow to the board an approval for a change order for the contractor to go ahead and install this signal. This is East Atlanta Bridge. This is how it looked last year. That's during construction, temporary bridge there. This is how it looks today, project completed. Much wider bridge, much safer bridge for that area there, Stockbridge. This is Pulling Road. Pulling Road, the curb and gutter section was completed last year. That's a section right there. And then this year, we just completed, back in early May, we completed this section, the typical section where we had ditch and shoulders and ditches. That's Simpson Mill under construction. That's Simpson Mill today. Again, Simpson Mill. That's close to Hampton-Locust Grove. That's how it looks today. I think I got one more Simpson Mill. That's how it looks today. And Simpson Mill connects Stairway 20 to Hampton-Locust Grove, and there's a lot of bus traffic on this road. So, it's definitely a good thing that we just completed this project, and especially with all the schools on Hampton-Locust Grove, so no more dust, I guess. This is Panola, at an intersection of Panola at East Atlanta. We, we realigned, this is the section where we realigned Panola Road. That's under traffic, under construction. This is completed now. There it is. You can see the crews working on the signal, and that's the signal completed now. Just finished early this year. This is Hampton-Locust Grove Road at Rocky Creek. That's before. That's how it looks today. Like I mentioned before, we just turned on the signal last Tuesday. That's during construction. That's how it looks today. Somebody questioned about that little curve in there. What we've done on this project, we build everything for the future, and that's why it looks kind of curvy there, but it meets speed zone, speed limit design. There's another view. Much better side distance now. This is South Bethany from Cohen to Philadelphia. That's during construction. That's how it looks today. Again, South Bethany. South Bethany, the contract, even though it's paved and pretty much completed, the contractor has to come back and do the punch list items once AT&amp;T moves, relocates their, their lines. That's another view of South Bethany before and how it looks today. This is Oakland Road, just after clearing. Now, under construction. That's another view of Oakland Road. We just started this job late April, and the contractor has already placed GAB on the, on the road, so they're moving along pretty good. If weather holds, we should be able to finish this way ahead of schedule. This is Race Track at Stairway 81. This project, there's another view. This project was led by GDOT, and Henry County SPOLOSS acquired all the roadway and also paid for utility relocation. This is Stairway 81, a new, a lake dial, another project completed this year, also by GDOT. GDOT was the, they put it out for bid and managed the construction, but Henry County SPOLOSS paid for the design, all the roadway, and portion of construction as well. There's another view. That's still Lake Dull. That's the new location of Lake Dull. Miller's Mill at 138. I think when we took this picture, I think they were all flashing. If I'm not mistaken, it's already running. The signal is functioning. Another project that GDOT put out for bid and managed the construction, but Henry County provided quite amount of, almost a million dollars for construction out of the SPOLOSS funds. That's another view. That's another view. They realigned Miller's Mill with a better, better location, close to 90 degrees versus that skew angle that they used to have. This is Rock Quarry. You can see the clearing going on, pretty much all dunk clearing. You can see on this picture the, the new transmission poles have been, been installed. One thing, because of the heat, the transmission won't be able to place the new lines until the weather cools off, but you can see on the, on the far right, the field going up for the, for the bridge approaches. This is Mackey Road under construction. Another view of Mackey. Box Colby completed on that portion of the road and opened up to traffic. That's another view of Mackey. That's Stashworth Road. We had to build two box culvers. They're backfilling those right now, so it's still closed for traffic. Should be open pretty soon. And that's all my presentation. If anybody has a question?
Questions? Mr. Holmes, is he?
As I think everyone knows, we have a big project planned for Fairview Road.
That's correct.
Can you give my constituents a timeline on when that project is supposed to be started and when it should be completed?
Okay. We should start acquiring roadway by the end of this year. The process, there's going to be roughly 80 to 90 parcels, so it's going to take about close to... So it's gonna take about close to eight to a year, eight months to a year to acquire this roadway. Once we acquire all the roadway, we'll put it out for bid. And this project, it looks like it's gonna be a two-year project just because of the magnitude, how big it is.
And the realignment of West Panola Road?
Correct. On the Fairview project, we're gonna be realigning, as you mentioned, West Panola. And in doing so, we're gonna be able to eliminate one of those, that signal that is West Panola at East Atlanta, which right now, I think it's 200, 250 feet from the Fairview East Atlanta signal. So you got two signals real close, and it's just, it's a nightmare for traffic.
Thank you so much.
Rocky, first of all, we said that. Through all that, I think the citizens ought to be able to feel very happy that it's probably the best investment, tax investment I've ever seen for a mere one cent without even knowing you're spending it and all the projects that were done. And also, I'd just like to convey to you and to Ron how proud I am of the people that have worked these projects yourselves and the work that you've done, my opportunity in the last six, seven months to work with your people and yourselves in getting these projects done and being very cautious and concerned about rubber runs and getting the projects in under your budget. Having settled that, Highway 381, I know you have it under design. We moved some money around to do it. What's that look like as far as from here after design and so on and so forth?
I think what we're now at, now that we have completed Hudson Bridge, I think there's, we can probably reallocate some funds into this project, this intersection. Because right now, the only funds we have is for design. So once we, I come back to the board, maybe next month, and move the money, we can move in into the roadway acquisition. We do have the signal approval permit from GDOT. We got that last year. We have submitted our plans to the railroad, and that's gonna be the, I guess, the point, you know, the, on the schedule, you know, trying to get the railroad approval on this. Because we can't do any work without them give us the permission. But once we get that, we can go ahead, while we're waiting on that, we can go ahead and start acquiring the roadway, and then put it out for bid. And we are gonna realign State Route 81 to come on a 90, right there where the railroad tracks is, are located currently. So you're looking at, hopefully by next, hopefully by before next summer, we can start construction on this project.
Just up and to one other question, that is, you mentioned the King Mill 42, although it's not my district.
Yes.
It is a state route. You said you had to get their approval for a signal. Who's paying for, going to pay for the signal?
SPLUS.
Not the state?
Not the state.
I'll leave that to Warren Holder from here then. Mr. Commissioner Holder.
You're here a minute as they walk our way down.
Okay. I'll just leave it for Mr. Commissioner Holder, thank you.
Mr. Stamey, did you have anything?
Good.
Mr. Holder?
Yeah, a couple of comments, and we'll start, Commissioner Holder, with King Mill. Rocky, correct me if I'm wrong, but back when that entire improvement was taking place, when Whirlpool was relocating here, GDOT required many improvements along Highway 42 at the developer's expense, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then we submitted a plan because, at the time, King Mill Road did not align. It was kind of a dogleg. GDOT didn't like that because it would, it meant two different locations for the continuation of that road. So we came up with a plan and had to negotiate right away so that this could be a full-way, full, four-way intersection. And there are 12 possible movements at that intersection, being a full-blown, a full-blown four-way intersection. Did GDOT not approve this plan?
They did not.
No, they approved the plan, I'm saying.
But they, the way it works, you have to have, of course, all this, before Whirlpool, let's start from beginning, before Whirlpool, we had this, this project was, this intersection improvement was part of the SPLUS, way before anything came about. Then, when, of course, when we asked for the signal, and of course, we already knew Whirlpool was coming or not coming, or not Whirlpool, did you say, yeah, Whirlpool.
Whirlpool.
Yeah, Whirlpool was, came in afterwards.
But Whirlpool is what triggered all of the e-sales and all of the improvements along?
And they did some improvements, they did. And they actually, they're supposed to contribute as well, you know.
That's correct, to the point of $200,000.
$200,000 for the signal improvement. And GDOT did not, when we submitted our plans, they said there was not enough data because there was not-
They didn't need the warrants.
That, correct.
They didn't need the warrants for a signal, but they approved the four-way plan?
They approved the four-way plan as a stop condition on King Mill.
Okay. Well, it's been a year. This road has been completed for a year now, and finally, we will vote on getting a signal.
It was completed around February of this year.
The first round or the second round? Part of it was-
Our portion.
But why was the other portion delayed? The railroad filed an injunction against us with a sign in the right-of-way, plus the contractor, there was an error in the contract's alignment on the east side of Highway 42. But how long has that project been going on, is my point?
At least over two years, two and a half years.
That's my point. So anyhow, as of tomorrow, we hopefully will approve a signal after all of this. Because what we had created was really a more hazardous situation with all the movements with the four-way intersection without it being signalized than had it been left alone. Well, obviously, the left alone was not gonna work. And it was not, we were encouraged to make the four-way alignment rather than having the offset. All right, the next one, and I'm sorry that Commissioner Stamey has stepped out, but I'd like for him to hear this, but Race Track in 81.
Yes, sir.
I understand that is, and you just alluded to the fact that that is a GDOT construction, and it is. But I wish you would let us know what the county's portion of that intersection improvement is, and what the difference is between what GDOT has put in and what the county SPLUS is having to put in.
I don't have the figures with me, but I can bring them tomorrow. I'll be here tomorrow.
That's really not necessary, because I asked for this information last week.
But we have-
And it's within about $30,000 of, we've paid over $300,000 into Race Track in 81, and GDOT will spend about that much, between $350,000 and $400,000. So when, at the end of the day, it's gonna be about a 50/50 deal with right-of-way and utility relocation versus construction cost. So I think people need to know that. The other one, Harris Drive in 42. Now, Commissioner Stamey remembers when there were two locations that were federal monies that Representative Westmoreland got for Henry County from federal highway money. And one was Lake Down 81, the other was Harris Drive 42. Well, that pot has continued to decline over the years. Started out at $600,000 per project, and it has consistently declined. You gave me those numbers last week also, because I asked about those. And those are projects that we're still gonna spend a lot of money on with utility relocation and right-of-way acquisition, plus we have one that's, that will end up being a court action for the right-of-way. So, just wanted to make clear, with these, that even though we're saying that they're someone else, or GDOT in this case is construction, that's just part of that whole project cost. And the right-of-way and utility relocation is running about 50% on Race Track in 81, and not far from that on Harrison 42.
I thought the Race Track in 81 participation from our side was like $625, Rocky.
On our portion?
Right-of-way and-
We require all the right-of-way.
Can you look on your numbers?
I left my book.
He's gonna bring them tomorrow.
I'll bring them back tomorrow, you can ask me. I'll bring that.
Yeah, but the presentation you just went through showed $625.
That's the total, that's-
Yeah, that's the total. But I don't have the, I don't have their numbers.
And if you look at the numbers as of today, and I asked for those last week and you gave them to me, I didn't bring them, I'm sorry. But they, the budget is almost there now, and we have spent over $300,000 in right-of-way, in the relocation, yeah.
On Race Track. And I think the key thing about it, Commissioner, is that without our SPLUS funds to assist either federal or GDOT money, or state money, those three intersections were never have been able to be completed because the state did not have the additional funds.
Absolutely. And what I said earlier about looking for grants, and that's nothing but a grant. You can call it and coat it however you want to, but when those monies come from the feds or from the state, that's money that we're not having to spend, and that's money that we really in the future are not gonna be able to count on heavily.
If you look at it, even on Race Track in 81, that project almost died about a year ago.
Oh, it did.
It almost died because the right-of-way got too expensive. We didn't have that, because I think it originally started out at a little over $215,000 for right-of-way, and it, some of the right-of-way originally was gonna put us over a million bucks, and we didn't have it in the project. So we almost, that project almost died.
Was it the one, that the one where we went back to GDOT and asked for a redesign of that project to save money?
Correct.
Mr. Bowman?
I've got, actually got three areas. Rocky, the one, going right along with Commissioner Holder's comments, 138 and Miller's Mill Road. I mean, that's something that's been looked at for years because of the way it turned out on the 138 with several deaths and a lot of accidents. I remember distinctly that we had approximately $600,000 to buy right-of-way. And at the 11th hour, we had to come up with $400,000 more, because we've got a little over a million dollars plus or minus in right-of-way acquisitions just for that particular intersection. So, that's true, Commissioner Holder. I mean, we've got over a million dollars in an intersection improvement that, you know, GDOT came to the table and they're doing the construction end of it, but I don't know that the construction end is much over a million dollars. I don't know that, it don't seem like it would be. But anyhow, I think we're putting more in it than what they were. Also, on the Eagles Landing Parkway, I get a number of calls on a regular basis about that, and I'll get some today because I think you made a comment about it being approximately 50% complete. I think it's probably more like 70% plus or minus.
Once we pave, once we do all this paving, it'll get to that point real fast.
Right, because I don't want them to think we're only halfway done, because then they're gonna come back and say, well, you told us you're gonna be done sometime by the first of March of next year. So I wanted to make sure that we made that complete. Now, I'm getting a lot of calls too, and I've explained to the citizens that are making those calls that we don't direct the paving schedule, even though it would make more sense from the start up there at the top of the hill and go all the way down to the first bridge and get us there. We're still gonna be turning everybody into two lanes when we get to that one point. But in your slides, the left-hand side coming down the hill, it's ready. I mean, it's ready. I mean, actually, the overcast would even be better for the paving.
It will, if it doesn't-
Particularly, yeah. So that particular section, it's ready. And if you shift over to the Villages side going down a little ways, it's ready. If you shift going past the bridge over the railroad tracks to the Carter's entrance, that entire section's ready all the way down. It would be great if they would go ahead and start laying some asphalt, but, you know, we can't direct them into doing that because then they come back and say, you know, we wanna change order because you're changing our schedule, but-
And you're right about that, because I have asked the same thing to the contractor. We have everything on the south side, if you wanna call it, being ready for a while. They're gonna concentrate on the opposite, on the north side, and they're gonna start where our field office is, right there by 4M Loop. And they're gonna start from there towards the interstate, and they're gonna pave all that. And then they're gonna go over East Lake and pave that section on East Lake, you know, that is ready, that is ready. And you can see that there's a little bit difference from the rock on the north and the south. The one on the north, they have prepped it, they have rolled it, it's on grade. Everything on the south is not on grade. There's still some catch basins that they have to pour and-
There's curb and gutter they don't have in, but one side is 100%.
There's portions, yeah, they have portions of, yes.
One side's 100%. The other area is after you cross 42, because what's happening there is it's getting very dangerous because we painted over the lines so many times now that, I'm telling you, as many, I go there every day, and even I'm like, the other day, I was half over the double yellow. Because the other yellow, you know, they need, they being that contractor, because they're creating, you know, basically a negligent type situation because you've got too many lines trying to direct the traffic in the wrong direction. So if you would take a look at that and get with them, that's-
I will look, you know, we can put RPMs, but, you know, that'd be something to guide you. But we're gonna be paving that and shift everything to the new-
Hopefully soon, because it's red.
Very soon, very soon, but very soon.
The, you know, and the bridge at the railroad tracks, I mean, they've got their beams poured. So all they gotta do is they're top.
Right, and that's gonna take, like I mentioned, they're probably gonna finish that prior to the one over the creek, but it's probably gonna be around, I would say about late September, October, when we get that one poured, because they gotta tie all that, it's a lot of steel.
We gotta tie the two together, that's right. And the other thing was the, I did get a call from a person with GDOT that made a comment that if I needed some additional help to get them to move in that area, but I told them I wanted to make sure what the schedule was before I did it. I really don't like to try and direct a contractor because you do get into some issues if something goes wrong. Well, you told me to do it that way as opposed to, no, 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 it's your schedule.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I just wanted to be sure about, the main thing was to be sure about, if somebody heard that 50% comment, my phone was gonna light up, and I wanna make sure that I got that done. Also, there is some conversation that the contractor may be able to complete the bridge over Rock Quarry earlier than at first schedule. So, you know, if you'll keep me updated or keep us updated on that, because that's another issue that I'm constantly getting calls on because they're afraid we're gonna close the road tomorrow. And I tell them, we're not doing that until we get Railroad Street complete to give an access point to come around behind the railroad tracks and get out on Rock Quarry, so.
And that's exactly correct. And the way the scale, schedule's supposed to work is they have three months to complete Railroad Street, and after that, then we'll close the road. But as you can see in the pictures, we already started building the field, so it's not gonna take too long.
It ain't gonna take as long as it first it said that it would.
Right, that's correct.
I appreciate it, thank you. And thank you for all the hard work. I mean, you guys, you guys are out there in the front. And whenever, whenever we get the calls on the issues, and when things go right, we get the congratulations. When they go wrong, we get the other side. But, you know, we know you guys are out there working hard to do it. And thanks for all your hard work, yours and Ron's. I think y'all do a tremendous job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stamey, I believe you have a comment?
Yeah, one last question, Rocky. Bethany and 81, the CVS was supposed to make a $50,000 contribution. Do you know if they put that in District 3 account yet?
We did receive a check for 50. I may have to check with finance, I'm pretty sure they did.
The light's hanging in the middle of the road, right, Rocky?
I would defer that to our finance director. He does have the $50,000. It went to that account.
Did we get it, no, we did get it, Mike?
We need to get the check.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
We had it split it between District 3.
You don't have to.
I'm more biased to sound of that, Mike. Well, we have the sound, we have the check, that's all I can say. That doesn't sound too good.
It went in a donation account for SPLUS, so it's in that particular project. It's not, that project is not necessarily broken out between the right side of the road and left side of the road, so.
I understand, but the donation account is what I'm-
He donated to District 3.
The donation account may end up being in, it may be in District 2.
It could be anywhere, but, okay.
I haven't heard about donation accounts.
We'll take it a couple years.
I have just a couple of questions too. And Terry, this is primarily for you. The resurfacing, I know that we've been using the PACES rating system for resurfacing- resurfacing, I know that we've been using the PACES rating system for resurfacing roads, and a couple of years ago, we were, as you explained it, anything below a seventy needed to be looked at as far as resurfacing, and I know, a couple of years ago, we were in the mid-fifties, do you know where we're at now, as, as far as what rating we're at? I know we were a little bit behind trying to catch up.
It depends, um, since we kinda set up a program by district, the northern end of the county unfortunately has the older roads, so, there, we're still, probably, some roads still in the fifties in the northern end, four and five. Um, in Districts one, two, and three, we're catching up a lot quicker, 'cause there's, the, the roads there are obviously not quite as old, so, we're doing a little better there. Um, next year, we'll probably propose something a little different than we have over the last four years, uh, we're, we're probably gonna start concentrating more on getting our primary roads up faster. What we're finding is that our major collector roads and arterial roads deteriorate faster because of the traffic volume and truck volumes on them, and once a road deteriorates, um, it costs you about twice as much to resurface it, so, our thoughts are is to try to get all of our major roads where they need to be first, and put a primary emphasis, although we will not abandon the subdivision roads, but primarily, we think we would catch up faster if we get our major roads done first and then concentrate on, on our subdivision. The subdivision roads, because of lesser volumes and things like that, they do not, um, go down as fast, the, the ratings don't drop as fast per year, so, we think we can get there quicker by getting our major roads up first, but, um, we will bring that individually to each commissioner, let them review that resurfacing list. Right now, we're kind of holding out for the, uh, redistricting list before we can come up with our list, so, uh, we're working on that, but we're a little, we're gonna, before we meet, it'll probably be when we feel comfortable with the current districting, and we'll be back.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on the fact that now that the districts or district lines will be changing, what wasn't yours is now yours, because you'll be picking up some in, I guess, over in the fifth district area, and so, it's, it's interesting dynamics as far as the allocation of those funds, that's what I like about taking politics as much as possible out of the resurfacing and do it based on needs, and not necessarily so that everybody's getting the same equal amount. Um, and, and I li, I like your idea of your major thoroughfares too, because I think everybody agrees those are important to everybody in the county regardless of the district, so...
Chairman, we, we're working on, I hope, hearing about, by the time we do this list, in about three or four months, um, with a little bit of software, I'm actually gonna come up with a plan, I think, that will determine in five years where we'll be at, it'll project, uh, the roads and, and how they'll go down and what we'll do each year, and, and look out about five years and predict how soon we can get everything, uh, up to a seventy. So, hopefully, here in a short time, we'll be able to present that to the board and give you an idea exactly where we're at, where we've been, and how long it'll take us to get to where we wanna be.
Well, I know, I have to comment again on the S-PLOST, what a great, what a great opportunity S-PLOST has given us to, to get a lot of these roads taken care of, and, um, just as a quick question to, again to you, Terry, do you know how many dirt roads we still have left in the county?
It's a little, it's around a hundred miles still, but I think S-PLOST has paid...
Yeah, we have paid, well, forty, forty-three miles that we have paid since we started.
Okay, so, we're getting there, it's just taking, taking a little bit of time.
On the positive side of that, and, and this is true, and we're seeing a little bit of improvement in our rock budget, we're spending less money on graveling these dirt roads, so, it is, you know, there is some, uh, some benefit in there, so, we have seen a decline in our rock budget.
Very good, all right, thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comments, and this is a time where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting, and we did have someone sign up for public comment, and public comment is limited to five minutes. The gentleman who will be speaking today is Mr. Anthony Lanier of forty-eight twenty-nine Mitchells Ridge Drive in Ellenwood, and, uh, Mr. Lanier is here to speak about the Fairview Football, um, Youth Athletic Association, um, and if you're here, if you would, if you could, just, uh, please step to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning.
And you have five minutes.
Okay, I'm here to voice my concern about, uh, Commissioner Holmes' attempt to, um, interrupt football season this year for, um, six through twelve years that have already signed up. Um, after not agreeing to play ball the way Mr. Holmes wanted us to play ball, he took his ball and ran home. We had a meeting on Friday about, um, what was going on with the, with the, uh, Football Association, we, um, we, we have kids signed up, and he made comment, oh, you all, I thought you all had me scared for a minute. He then went into asking questions about the finances, and I had to speak up, because I just saw too many things going wrong, where there wasn't any physical support as far as, you know, promoting the program, or actually helping the registered kids, or actually putting anything towards the program through his foundation, which I Googled and found no evidence of anything done in Minnesota or here. Um, after I, I approached Mr. Holmes with the comment of, I asked the question that, um, no, I made a statement, I said, you haven't done anything for us physically or financially to support this, uh, program, and his comment back to me is, so, you're saying that, um, you, you don't wanna go into my foundation? And I said, if we don't, then what? And we went back and forth about four times until I said, no, we don't wanna go into your foundation. That's when Mr. Holmes decided to take his ball and go home. He went outside for about thirty minutes with two people from his office and sent them back in to do his dirty work by telling us that the field that we, uh, we, we had permission to play on this year, which is Banks Road in the Stockbridge area, he was gonna make some calls to, um, uh, Tony Colley and make sure that, um, that he knew that we wouldn't need the fields this year. And we already have kids signed up, we have cheerleaders signed up. To me, that's a crime against kids, I'm an educator, I've worked the past twelve years in education with kids, most of my time is spent with kids, if it's not at work, then it's out on the field, my son has played baseball, basketball, I don't, none of this is political for me, and the steps that he took is political. You know, under Mr. Holmes' foundation, you know, we, when we, we, we made this decision a couple of weeks ago, and he was informed by Mr. Guilford that we would not be going on this foundation, Mr. Guilford opened up an account for Fairview Youth Association, and Mr. Holmes went over to Best Bank and accessed the account without permission. So, the things that he's done, you know, i- i- if it wasn't, he sent an email this morning about his not-for-profit organization, my question is, and I've always been raised to ask questions, my question is, if it's not-for-profit for you, then why are you so concerned about how much is in the bank, why are you taking steps, illegal steps, to find out how much money we have as an association? Our, you know, the Fairview community, our schools are good, we have a lot of professionals in the community, my wife is an educator in Henry County, we want something in our area for our kids, we don't have a football field right now, we would like a football field, we have Hidden Valley, you know, there's land in the Ropes area where a football field may be able to be built, um, there's also maybe a, a baseball field that can be converted to a football field. Our organization, what we're trying to do, where we wanna go with our kids, we wanna do something with mentoring, we wanna do something with life skills, we wanna do, we wanna be able to, you know, put up money for, um, free tutoring through the educators in our area, we also want to get together with some citizens and start up a scholarship fund, but the way Mr. Holmes wanted us to run things, you know, as far as, he, if, if he had been putting forth any effort to assist us with anything, then we wouldn't have had an issue, but there was no effort to assist us with anything with this organization, it's really been the effort of these two guys, myself and another young lady, to get this going, and it's been hard. He originally started the thing with the Northern Panthers, no one in this room has a, a Little League, um, program in their, in their, um, district that goes by something that no one even hears of, you have the Locust Grove, you have McDonough, um, you have North Henry, people can identify with those areas, but no one in our area can identify with Northern Panthers, that was a setback right there. You know, we felt, Mr. Guilford made the decision to go with Fairview Panthers, and that's when we started getting calls from people about, you know, what's going on, this is Fairview, and I'm still getting calls by people wanting to sign up. I just think it was a travesty, you know, with his attempt to, you know, really tell parents, 'cause we weren't gonna tell the parents, we were gonna give them their refund and give them a letter so he can address the parents. You know, I voted for this guy, and I sat, and I looked him in his face and asked him those questions, and I also told him that I vote for him, and for him to, you know, play, play games like this, it's not right. And I will, my personal attempt, and I know someone, I know other people, 'cause I've already notified people in the district, I don't think he'll be able to serve us full-term. We will find somebody that wants to represent us like we wanna be represented, we want more for our kids, we don't want anybody, you know, coming in saying that we haven't done for our kids, we want more for our kids.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lanier, your time has expired, we asked Mr. County Manager, perhaps you and Tim Colley and, and Commissioner Holmes can, can get together with Mr. Lanier and their group and see if, how this can be resolved.
We sure will.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything for public session, Mr. Sanders?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No.
The upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, Tuesday, August the second, at nine AM, we have a regular meeting, Monday, August fifteenth, at nine AM, we have a regular meeting, Tuesday, August sixteenth, the meeting has been canceled, Friday, September second, all county offices will be closed for a furlough day, Monday, September fifth, all county offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day, Tuesday, September sixth, at nine AM, we have a regular meeting. We will not be having executive session this morning, and if there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor, motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.